Before we get accused of breaking the open meeting law, I'd better call this meeting to order. It is the appointed time, so the meeting is now called to order. Now we can chit chat. Anyway, first item as the state prescribes is additions to and deletions from the posted agenda, and I see that we have four additions. Any others?
Don't think so.
Then we'll move on next to citizens' comments. Not hearing any response, and we'll move on. I presume that you're here for the welcome sign proposal?
Yes.
Why don't we just move right into that then, please? You're here.
I'm going to defer to the two commissioners, Barry Millstone and Gail Childs, who are really working on the idea of erecting welcome signs on the east and west ends of the town.
Okay. We have welcome signs on the village, but not the town.
The town.
Lower town.
The village signs making some townspeople feel like they were left out, but that's not stuff. All right, Gail and Barry, why don't you speak to it?
I'm going to briefly discuss the concept, and Gail's going to talk about the details and design and pricing and such. Briefly, coming from the west, there's no signage that says Woodstock. There's individual signs on establishments, but there's no welcome sign. Arriving from the east, the only sign is at the village, and often the first impression at that sign is a $25 speed limit and a police cruiser. Really, there's a, you know, the crossroads of Vermont Byway passes through 10 miles of Woodstock. It's a beautiful drive. One thing that the signs will do is it'll provide an inclusive and a unifying welcome home to all town residents, maybe a sense of pride. And to the visitors, it identifies all 10 miles of that stretch as Woodstock, partly just something for them to enjoy. And one of the long-term goals of the EDC is to increase the population base. There's a lot more than the village to Woodstock that might attract people to move to Woodstock. Coming from the east, if there was a sign at the east end, not to the exclusion of others, but some of the images are the Tassville Bridge and the country store, the historic Tassville Cemetery, Billings and Maple Crest Farm views, Braesheim, Woodstock Terrace is another living option. From the west, part of the Bridgewater Mill, the historic tall Robinson barn, full disclosure, it owns me. Half of the Woodstock, the lodging venues are along the west stretch of the scenic byway. Leaking Covered Bridge, people love covered bridges, that's another bridge we should claim as being in Woodstock. The high school, the arena, little theater, the athletic center, the pool, basketball court. There's just a lot that we should be claiming as part of Woodstock to people who are driving by. Signs with, particularly with the PR firm, signs can also provide kind of social media content opportunities to have more photos out there of Woodstock. I think it's a pretty straightforward concept, signs to identify the limits of the town.
Norman, South?
Right now, we're proposing our grant application that we've reviewed and approved ourselves is just at the east and west. We'd also discussed north and south, we've discussed village or hamlet signs, but currently, all that we're, that's on the table right now is east and west along Route 4.
So what are the locations you're looking at? Or scale do you intend?
Yeah, I can look very pretty well. Cover the locations would be Tassville, right before the bridge, and entering into West Woodstock, where the line is between Bridgewater and West Woodstock. And West Woodstock is called Woodstock, and Tassville, of course, is Tassville, but Tassville got its name from Daniel Taft, whose son is Owen Taft. And the Taft family built those three prominent properties, one of which I own, in Tassville. And when they did that, that's why that name, Tom, that's why that hamlet of Woodstock got named Tassville because of the Taft family. So it is basically in Woodstock. I know I pay my taxes to the town of Woodstock. But anyway, the Tassville group, back when the original village sign was erected, were a little miffed group of people in Tassville who felt that the sign should always be down at, on the borders of Woodstock. So when we were commissioned, the EDC was formed, as you can see if you read it here, back in 2009. But now that we have the 1% local tax that was passed in 2015, our committee was formed to create the potential of more visitors and hopefully people to reside in Woodstock. And we weren't so much focused on events and activities as much as we are on potentially having people want to live and work and play in Woodstock, such as myself when I came 20 years ago. And I can certainly appreciate the fact that we definitely want to remain the town we are without adding further traffic to it. But we just felt as a committee that the signs would really show who we were and where our town began and ended. So as Barry said, with that, the gentleman who owns the sign company in Heartland, Jerry, erected the sign that's in the village now, currently. And all we want to do is, by your decision, of course, would be to, A, leave it and maybe add entering the village, or remove it and only buy one sign to put in West Woodstock and move that one down to Tassville. So that would be your choice, of course. And he is willing and still around 10 years later. That sign was put in 10 years ago, and incidentally in still fabulous shape. So it's really very, very minimal maintenance. If someone wants to go and hose it down, that's about all that's necessary in the last 10 years, and it's still looking really well. So he put a very, very generous proposal together, which I have for you, if you have any questions, as to the size. It would be identical to what's currently there. Nothing would change. We talked about stating entering West Woodstock or entering Tassville, but decided the goal is to have it say Woodstock. So here is the cost. The total cost, and I'll pass this on to you folks, the total cost I added up would run about $4,300. So we're a little over asking. I think $4,500 would start here.
All right.
Would easily cover everything, including he would do the installation at your decision as to where you feel the boundary is. And he's pretty familiar with it, so.
Off to your question, we do need to work out the detail exactly where it goes.
Exactly.
Yeah, Bridgewater side, there's no room where the town line is.
It'd be intriguing to see what you did on the Bridgewater side.
Right, and so it may not be-
It's right there at the mill.
Right, so it may not be at the town line, but somewhere closer than the village.
It would probably confuse the public to have it at the true town line. It confuses everyone.
That's true.
Because it's right in the middle of a building.
And in the middle of Bridgewater Village.
Right. However, that all being said, we're not being critical at all.
You know-
Of course, I re- sorry to-
Go ahead. Thinking of that, where the mill is, you're correct about that. It's possible, just to give some semblance of where we are, to put it further up, even though that may not be the accurate boundary. It's possible we could look at something like that to consider, because I can see the point of the Bridgewater Mill Mall, but that is the Woodstock boundary.
It's around the Robinson Fields or something.
Yeah.
Big fields or something.
Yeah.
Okay, they're on the river side.
Across the way-
River runs through.
Oh, this is property, or some, there's some space for a sign.
So would you be speaking to the landowners and find a happy landowner?
Absolutely.
It's been-
It's done.
Yeah, we've done that.
So what about the people that, you know, like, the bed and breakfasts that are right in Bridgewater Village but are in Woodstock?
They're-
They wouldn't want to have it on the other side of that?
Well, there's a farmhouse and Woodbridge Inn.
Woodbridge is what I'm thinking of.
In Woodbridge. Woodbridge would be happy to have a sign in their yard.
Oh, well, oh, yeah.
Thanks.
Well, that kind of explains the name Woodbridge.
Yeah.
Yeah, that might work.
That's a good place.
It's a good place.
The other tricky sighting, of course, is Tassville. Trying to find enough space because the Heartland line, depending if you're coming east, I don't know if you guys have figured that out yet.
Jerry-
If you're coming west, I'm sorry, from the east, the line is right beyond the Tassville Bridge.
Well, it's never intended to be on the line.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's just indicative of where, well, here we are, welcome to Woodstock.
So is it which side of the bridge?
It's actually, if you're headed east, it's just beyond the Tassville Bridge on the right.
We were thinking-
There's a sign there for it.
Yeah, well, I sold a property right there.
How accurate is-
And the double condo, and that was coming west before the bridge.
It's a high-risk purchase.
Yeah, and it would be across from there, yeah.
Do you live with the town?
We're talking to the surveyor here, but yes, I understand. Merely because I don't want to get us into trouble, the sign at the village border that was put in 10 years ago, I believe was paid for by the trustees.
Correct.
So we wouldn't want-
It's a village sign.
To just say, oh, let's move it if it's their sign.
No, we felt that way, too.
So you'd need to talk to them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it could stay there.
It could stay there. It would be clearer, and I don't know what it would, what would be involved if it said welcome to the village of Woodstock or something like that.
Yeah, Jerry could probably just go out there and add what he does. You know, he could add to it and make a new sign, or a new sign.
Okay. You're looking for us to just-
Well, I would thought he could take that original sign-
Yes.
For the same money, I wouldn't want to buy three signs, move that to the Tassville location, and then make one of the new signs say, "The village of Woodstock." That would solve that problem, and then put it right back.
I think our request was to first get a sense of the board.
It felt like it wasn't a final request, but I didn't know. Okay.
We need to have the final numbers on the sighting and what that is, but really to get your consensus, is this something that you would support?
So you're not talking about something that features the logo?
The design of the artwork, right now, the simplest thing is to just replicate that existing sign. That's the simplest without controversy. The, or less controversy, the branding of, or the PR firm that we are hiring may think differently, but right now, all that we're trying to explore is replicating that sign and locating one the east end, locating one at the west end of town. That's accurate, right?
That's accurate, two times.
Yeah. Well, I don't know if we're only looking for a sense, I guess we don't need a vote, but it sure does sound like we're all for it. It's, you know, it's always got to work out the details.
So we need to go talk to the village, I think, about their sign.
I think they'd probably like having, let's say-
They should be rebid if there's any planning to do their sign, certainly.
Definitely. Yeah, we can do that and probably get Jerry out there. I'll give him a call and see what he thinks about the locations. Or we could, you know-
Why don't you ask Jerry what it would take to make the existing sign reflect the village boundary?
Okay.
Him go out with a can of paint-
Yep.
Or however he would propose to do it.
I think that's a carved sign, isn't it?
It is.
Then, so I may want to put it back. So ask him what it would take to-
No, it's vinyl.
It is? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I know it's not in front of me right now, okay.
It's well done. It looks carved.
Really well done, yeah.
I would have assumed it was carved, so that's good.
It's his business. I know.
Yeah, but that's the amazing thing about modern products, and then vinyls that last can hold up really well.
This one has.
Great.
Excellent. Well, we'll get further information and-
Yes.
And get it back to you.
Great.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good work.
Great idea. I guess let us put the matter of the details.
Yep. And if you are looking, yep, we'll take that, and I will get on that, and there we go. Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you.
I did brush over in citizen comments what I haven't gotten the background from Phil yet, but he included in our package a very complimentary letter from the town of Weathersfield, signed by all five select board members and the town manager, thanking our fire department for its excellent response to the brush fire at the Yankee Village motel in Scutney. This is a rare thing to get, something like that.
Yeah, it is. The first one I ever remember seeing.
And I'm assuming we did, our fire department did an exemplary job for to generate that, or they just felt-
We were one of them, yeah.
Yeah, good, good, well. Someone deserves credit for that, and I'm making note of it publicly.
Thank you, Chris.
It's, like I said, it's not like our board sends out letters like that very often, and I think they obviously were very grateful for whatever service we provided.
Sure. I would think so. Sure, that's a good idea.
So, moving on, we are on old business, and I think we only have one item which has to do with tax sales.
That's only give you a bad report that the bank that holds the mortgage on one of the properties will be paying. So it's one of those three that will not be going to tax you because the bank is paying it.
Okay, okay, all right. And so that's all for this item, we just didn't-
This is a little-
Yep, and we have three in all of you said, so one of them, yeah.
That's our down two.
Yeah.
What was the date of that, because I'm going to be here for it?
June 17th.
Okay, you'll remind me.
Yes, Lynn will remind me.
She's good at reminders.
Big part of Lynn's job, keep us reminded. In that case, I think we can move on to new business, and the first item is bid tabulations. We've got four things we've asked people to bid on: diesel fuel, sand, gravel, and fuel oil.
So the first one is diesel. I asked for a floating price because I thought it was, I wasn't sure how well we would do if we asked for a fix. The company HB Energy from Springfield bid a fixed price, even though it was not spec, but I didn't want to throw it out if people on the board felt different to me. It's 30 cents a gallon more than the Irving's today price.
How volatile is that?
That's, that's your own personal-
The variable prices.
It flows with the market.
And Irving's-
You only pay so many pennies above their cost.
Oh.
You know, for them to buy, truck it here, store it, truck it out, deliver it, all that stuff.
So Irving's who we use now.
We've been with Irving. I think 30 cents a gallon is quite a premium for a ceiling.
But the gas prices, our opinion, in that direction.
Yes. You don't know how fast or for how long. 30, yeah, 30. Over 18,000 gallons, that's like $5,500 bucks.
That's a lot of bucks. Yeah.
I bid it so that it would float. I didn't think bidding it for a fixed price for 12 months would be in our interest.
So in light of that, I guess I would make the motion that we go back on Phil's recommendation and select Irving Energy for the diesel fuel bid.
Is there a second?
Sure.
We have a sure. Okay. Those in favor of the motion to continue with Irving Energy for diesel fuel, which is currently $187 a gallon, but variable, please say aye.
Aye.
I would say that is passed. Thank you. Sand.
The next one gets a little interesting, because two bidders were identical at $15.90 a ton for the manufactured sand, that being Pike Industries and Twin State Sand and Gravel.
You prefer manufactured sand?
Well, we mix it with bank-run screen sand. The manufactured is sharper and it gets bite, but because it's so dark, it absorbs sun and sinks right through your- It also is just completely stoned. That's all it is.
Who would think there's all these details to sand, but of course there are.
So if, what we could do is just bid it again, just say they came in identical, we want to have another crack at it. We do business with both of them. We're not need it for a while. You don't put your sand pile up until September. Don't need a sand pile for a while, huh?
I thought that yesterday morning.
Yeah, that's right. But the DMD excavated the screen sand delivered at 1250. Nobody came close to that.
How is this compared to past year?
Similar.
Well, I do see your point. If we've dealt with both, of course, the two companies we're talking about is Pike Industries and Twin State. If we've dealt with both, if we're satisfied with both, if they both come in with the same price, it's almost a coin flip. And so I guess, Phil, if you don't think it's out of line to say-
Well, the only thing I could say is that no question that either one of them could put up to 2,000 tons of sand, but we do know that you call Pike, and they got such an army of trucks. In January, they deliver. Just pronto. You can't, nobody delivers faster than Pike, but they are the same price, and they've had our winter sand for years.
Yeah, I mean, you did suggest contacting them again, but I, they would probably only move pennies, probably.
No, there isn't. These are rock prices.
Probably not a lot of room to move, so that being said, well, I know I'm the chair here, I guess I shouldn't be too willful, but it does seem like your suggestion of going with Pike has merit.
You know, if you're talking about-
Yeah.
What do you think, John?
Jeez, I don't want it. It's strange they come out with exactly the same price. Why don't you table it? We'll bring it back next month.
Sure.
And I'll talk to Ken about if he has any preferences, or if he thinks-
Yep.
One's better than the other.
Like you said-
I can bring it to you, but just not have a decision on who to buy the wash sand from. I'm positive that both of them will deliver, because Twin State's got just as much delivery services. Then I'll ask them to-
I can, so. Sure.
Why don't we rebid it in a couple months?
We have the luxury of plenty of time.
We'll rebid it in the summer.
Okay.
And so we may have, you know, less book of business, and they may need the income more than the other in our case. We've seen it. Okay, that's good. We'll rebid it, but not right now.
Maybe they'll give us a deal for sand and gravel.
Yeah, because we're going next to gravel.
Maybe we're going next to gravel.
It's a strange business. Yeah, it's close.
Except Twin State didn't bid.
Sounds like somebody knew something, knew something, dug it. So on the next sheet of gravel, we're bidding both hard pack and crushed bank-run gravel.
So I know, I always knew Sosoma was a forest products company, but they must have some kind of a crusher now.
They do.
Whereabouts is that?
Amston. It's between here and Springfield. If you go down 106 and then go towards 91, you'll go by their Amston pit.
All right. But anyway, they're not the lowest bid. I just was intrigued.
So your lowest price for hard pack is Pike Industries at $7.75 a ton, FOB or $13.70 delivered.
And we're looking for both?
Yes.
So why would we have no bid from Twin State for the crush?
They don't have it.
They just don't have it.
They got that, all that mountain overlooking West Lebanon. There's no gravel on it, just-
They'll take that if they give us a deal on that one.
Twin State has a lot of gravel left, but, yeah, Pike, they don't have any. Well, they have enough to get their product for stone, but that's it.
But we're correct in saying that Pike Industries is the cheapest bid.
Yeah, for both.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Anyone ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We go with Pike Industries for the gravel.
I'll second it.
Gravel and hard pack made and seconded. Those in favor of Pike Industries, please say aye.
Aye.
I would say that that is unanimous.
Maybe they'll give us a deal on sand, seeing as we want with the-
That's right.
You can double.
All right, now we've-
Negotiated.
Good deal.
At heating oil.
Good.
Yeah, so Irving Energy is less than Dead River, so it's a dollar 91.9 from Dead River, dollar 90 and nine tenths.
Penny.
A penny.
One penny difference.
But the price for your boiler maintenance and service calls and emergency service calls, you're going to save money on that aspect of the book of business.
Quite a bit.
Yes, you're going to save a lot.
Yeah, with Dead River.
The package is cheaper with Dead River.
And we've had them before.
Yeah, serving a lot less. Yeah, and it's good service.
Did you say it was 18,000, or that was the other?
That was the other. This will be about 8,000 on the bid, and then we'll float another 4,000.
And this, just because I'm nosy, it fuels this building and the two fire stations?
Just this building.
Just this building, okay.
The two fire stations are both propane.
Okay. There are one or two furnaces in this.
Do you have a bid for that, too? Three. We're three boilers and one boiler room. No, they float.
Oh, they float, yeah. So 8,000 pennies is only an $80 difference.
Which is half of one.
But I can see, if you're talking about service of three boilers-
I'd make a motion, please go with Dead River.
Yeah. Motion's made.
Second.
Motion seconded to go with Dead River Company for our heating oil and boiler maintenance. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I would judge that that's unanimous. All right, thank you for making this easy, Phil. Next item is the Welcome Center. I think it's our bond notice for our loan.
So what we have, we have one bid. Last month, we reviewed bids, and Mascoma was the lowest. But in reviewing procedures with bond counsel, you want me to redo it so that they'd be open tonight at your meeting tonight. So I fully expect it to be the same.
There it is.
I don't know, because we're opening it now.
The biding the one.
Just so you can't possibly camper with it.
So why did we only get one, then?
Because what I did to comply with the law, I put it in the newspaper. I did not call everybody and say I was rebidding. I put it in the newspaper, so if they're reading the newspaper, looking for work, which people do that are looking for work, they would've seen it. And it is at 1.95%.
Same as before.
Same as before. Same as before. Stamped as an original.
And this is fixed for...
Fixed for 20 years. That was the rub last time, nobody wanted to go long. That is just too long for them, most of them, to consider.
And we're going 20 years just because that's what makes the work, technically, for the...
That gets the payment down in line.
Yeah.
And the actual bond documents that you're gonna sign is for $96,000. We don't need the whole hundred thousand.
Yeah, which we didn't think we would, but... And that's just based on... Have the builders made bids yet, or is it still...
We're at... Upland Construction has started.
We select them.
Yep, we select them.
They're at...
Yeah, okay. Good, then you've got a firm amount, okay.
Yes, we have a contract subject to a few minor change orders.
Right, which, we all know that can happen, yes, okay. Good, wonderful.
So I guess at this time, a motion will be in order for the minutes about accepting that.
Yep.
So moved.
Butch has made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second is made. Those in favor of the Mascoma Savings Bank Long Term Commitment Loan.
Again.
Again, which we have opened tonight, please say aye.
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 We're unanimous, all right. And this needs to be...
There are some papers to be signed.
Okay.
This is the entire pack, if anybody's interested, the three pieces of paper that the select board needs to sign to start with Butch and head of this guy.
Okay, because this has a signature line on it, too, it's probably for you.
Okay, we can do that. The ones that count is right here.
Okay.
These are the ones that count.
Okay.
This doesn't really.
Okay.
We'll give it... We've been through this before, they want it on their own paper, but they also have to do those as well.
Okay.
Everybody's got their procedures. And bond counsel's very fussy.
Yes, that's what we pay them for.
That's right.
Is to be fussy, yes. Well, I suppose we can, I don't... Well, why don't we just sign it, because next we're gonna talk about meeting schedule, and I think we all need to have our attention for that. Not be distracted, speaking for myself.
1.95 percent. Fixed for 20.
So there's three places to sign here.
Yes.
Actually...
Three pages.
Yeah, all right. One of them has too many lines. I thought I signed it in the wrong place, but I think they just put too many lines on it.
Never know.
I've got a lot of calendar here.
June, what's happening in June?
Well, they...
Yes, and now we've gotta talk about, just for anybody who's listening, for when we're gonna meet next, so go ahead, Phil.
So you're scheduled for the 21st.
Yeah.
Does one if you consider reschedule? That's one of the few weeks that my family and I can have together, includes the 21st.
Vacation.
Of course, I have my scheduling problems, too. You think you're moving to the 28th, or...
To us, throw out the 20th, keep it on Tuesday, but any other night that we can push...
I may just have to miss it. But that's not the end of it.
Come up to the second...
It's better that I miss it than you miss it, we couldn't do the meeting.
I might do it like on a night other than Tuesday and the second week.
Do you have the trustees on the 6th?
On the Tuesday, the 10th, right?
Oh, okay.
Well, 10th is graduation, it's Friday.
I'll get a staff break.
No, graduation.
I could do the 13th, which is Monday, or the 16th, which is Thursday. But otherwise...
I know, I try to, but I never have it all on my phone, my...
Can you see that, Butch?
I cannot, Phil.
Graduation is when?
10th, June 10th.
Okay.
16 or...
I'm available 13 or 16.
13 or 16. We got listers and energy at 5:30, but that's all right.
Works for me.
I think I'm okay.
Thursdays are no good for me.
How's the Monday, the 13th?
That's fine.
All right. John?
Yeah?
That's okay?
All right.
Good.
I'll put it on my phone right now.
Put it on, wait, write it down.
Play it on before it changes.
All right. Monday, the 13th instead of Friday.
I don't bring my phone.
We got by Friday, the 13th already.
Took me a long time to switch to my phone, that would be at 6:00 PM, right? Okay, yeah.
6:00 PM, 13th, I don't pick them anywhere, but...
Good.
Additions to? Terminities.
Well, I guess I will probably go to our supplemental agenda for the additions. Which means...
Two of them are with the sewer department.
Yeah, two of them would go with the sewer, you're absolutely right. So let's do the policy on record disposal next, please.
Lynn, do you have some of those to pass out?
Yeah, I did.
Oh, okay, so it's at your place.
Yeah, I got them.
No, under there. I'm not used to all these papers.
So the Secretary of State Archives Division has what you're looking at, has their schedule of what you can destroy. So they say the town needs to adopt a policy on what the town wants to destroy, and I'm suggesting that we take a mirror image and follow the recommendations of the Secretary of State.
Why not?
Now, we're not gonna destroy all those, because we've got so many years worth, we're just gonna start with the oldest and work back. But if they recommend, say, you can destroy, say, payroll records or vendor receipts, three years, we keep 10 years because we can't destroy all of that. And that's what it'll mean for now, but eventually we'll like to get it cleaned up and get...
Just some of the stuff that's up in the attic you were talking about?
No, the attic.
Oh, yeah.
There's no room to move what's in the backpack.
So this whole list here is just different policies the state itself has adopted?
Yeah, that's right.
And that whole list constitutes their general records schedule?
Different classes of records.
Okay. Well, I mean, I certainly think the safe and prudent thing to do is adopt what the state recommends.
I'm joking.
So why don't we make that motion?
Motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
Yeah? Motion made and seconded. Those in favor of adopting what we're calling here a general records schedule, policy for disposition of public records, please say aye.
Aye.
I believe that's all of us, all right. Have fun, Phil. Knock yourself out.
Oh, I guess I'll give you an update on pricing.
Oh, yeah, shredding?
The Secure Shred is your cheapest. They're $5 a box, but they carry it down to the street from the alley. The Vermont Shred is $4 at the truck, and they would charge $2 a box to get it down from the end.
And you don't wanna save a couple bucks and do it yourself?
No, that's right.
Oh, gosh.
I don't think it would save.
No.
I think if the crew gets here, they're gonna say, "What are we doing this for?"
Yeah.
I even wonder if we...
They'll load up the elevator.
If we advertise it as a job bank, how many people would wanna carry a box down two flights of stairs for two bucks?
It'd last all day.
Yeah. Gee, that's tough. Could be wrong, but anyway. In that case, I believe we can move on to overweight truck permits.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a bunch of them here, and I've reviewed them all. They all seem to be in order, so I recommend we pass them.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's made and seconded to pass a bunch, but we always trust John's judgment, so...
A bunch of overweight trucks.
I've reviewed them all.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That, I believe that's all of us, thank you. Now we move on to the Board of Sewer Commissioners, which has a couple items here.
So we have a blower that, at the sewer plant, that needs to be replaced. The cheapest is $9,012.
This is the main plant?
Yes, the main plant. It comes with a two-year warranty, and the old one is a 1997.
Now, of course, we did that $50,000 or $60,000 blower.
Yes.
And that one is working fine? And that one's saving us a lot of energy?
Yes, it is, that is...
Do you know if this...
This is not the same technology.
No, okay.
That works on the repelling magnets principle, and this is a traditional copper wind.
Okay, okay. So it's a straight replacement?
Yes.
Okay.
They could rebuild it, but it would cost more.
Yeah.
There's nothing left to reuse, it doesn't actually, you know?
And it's probably the time element, too.
It is.
They build again, it takes out quite a bit of time.
We have, everything in the sewer plant is redone, in that you have two of everything, if one fails, you've got one working. So there's one working, which you've gotta get the second one replaced fast, and there's a problem with the first one.
Okay.
So there's no objection to proceed with that?
No, I think it needs to be done, and the nice thing is that we have money set aside for it.
True.
Need a motion?
No, if everybody's down for what is proceeded.
That's fine, yeah. Go blow.
So the other one, I guess, is the Lyman Show sewer bill.
He's not using the building and would like to have that account disappear in future sewer billings. Because he's not using his shop.
Well, if you're satisfied he's not using it, then he certainly shouldn't get billed for it.
It's been on the market for some time.
Yeah.
I totally heard that somebody else is gonna take it, but...
Well, they wanted to, but the neighbors kind of objected.
Oh, is that right?
Oh, yeah.
All right, well, I guess we need a motion.
Yeah.
So moved.
Motion's made.
Seconded.
Seconded. Those in favor of eliminating the bill for Lyman Show's shop, please say aye.
Aye.
I would say that we have passed that thing. All right, well, I kinda had a hunch tonight would go along fairly smoothly, so we're down, I believe, to approval of minutes.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes. I looked at them all, and I couldn't find them either. I keep trying to find them, and they're up.
I keep telling Lynn she should leave something there for John to find, but...
I make a motion, we approve both.
But this is both April 26 and May 6.
May 6.
I believe it's April 26 and May 76.
Yep. All right, motion's been made.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Those in favor of approving both sets of minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
And for those watching at home, I have the good news to report that the state will be paving Vermont 12 between Woodstock and Barnard this summer.
Oh, and 106.
And 106.
All the drainage this week.
Yeah, they've been doing guardrails and drainages, yeah. Yeah, no, I can tell you the town of Barnard's also quite happy about that.
Would it be possible to get hold of the state, see if they can pave from the river road entrance up to the village's line?
No, it's not on their...
It's not on their agenda.
Well, it's not...
It's in the town line.
It's in the village.
Can we do it? Can the village do it? Boy, it's bad right there.
There's worse village streets than that.
Oh.
Okay. Now...
Yeah, we can put it on the list.
What is the status?
It's bad.
What's the status for 106?